Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Lambert, Chairman of the Board, and I would like to call the November 8th, 2023 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisor meeting. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America, we are proud to stand on the nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
We apologize we're having numerous technical difficulties, including my voice, which is going, but we also are not live at this point in time. And so people know, we have put out on the website information to the problem that we're having and an email to be sent to donna weichardt@eastwhitland.org in the event that there are any questions. I know you'll be hearing this after the fact, but in the event that you have any questions after viewing this, please send the questions again to Donna. First item on the agenda, if Rich can help me out here, we're going to review the rules of order for public meetings for everyone at this point in time. Rich?
Okay. This sheet is out by the, on the table also. You may have it already, but I won't read word for word. We ask, these are rules to keep order in the meetings. We ask that a speaker be a resident or taxpayer of East Whiteland. We don't necessarily enforce that. Resident or taxpayer may have legal counsel speak for them. We ask that any speaker be limited to three minutes, so everyone has a chance to speak. We ask that all comments be courteous and not be offensive. We're very sensitive up here. Yelling, chanting, attacks, we ask to not take place. Questions should be directed at witnesses, if there are any, and not at board members or other speakers, or not to have dialogue between members of the audience, so we can keep order. No signs are permitted. I don't see any signs. Please stay relevant to the topic. The chair or solicitor will, if necessary, enforce the rules. We have the discretion to waive any of the rules or call for a recess at any time. If residents have a legal counsel, we ask that they register for the meeting and sign in outside. Thank you for your cooperation, and we usually don't have to worry about many of these.
Moving on, these are the moments that we hate to have to bring up in a situation. But Greg Lewis, if you could lead us into a moment of silence for a fallen comrade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the night of October 20th, during the heavy downpour, the West Whiteland Fire Company was dispatched to an emergency incident. While responding to the station in their personal vehicle, firefighter Colin Reedy and firefighter Emily Gandel's vehicle exited the roadway in a heavy downpour and entered a wooded area. Tragically, firefighter Colin Reedy was pronounced deceased at the scene, and his girlfriend, firefighter Emily Gandel, was in very critical condition. The East Whiteland Fire Company ambulance responded to this incident and transported firefighter Emily Gandel to Paley Memorial Hospital, where she underwent surgery for the injury sustained in this accident. She is currently still in Paley Hospital with a very long road ahead of her. If you could please keep the family of Colin Reedy in your thoughts and prayers, and firefighter Emily Gandel and her family in your thoughts and prayers. Everybody could join me in a moment of silence for the line of duty death of firefighter Colin Reedy from the West Whiteland Fire Department. Thank you.
Next on board briefings. Executive sessions were held on October 27th, 2023, at 2:30; November 7th, 2023, at noon; and also on November 8th, 2023, at 4:30 in the afternoon for legal real estate and personnel matters. Next, to be, Catherine, if you can lead us on any updates with the grants that we've been diligently receiving and going after?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One announcement to make for this month is staff continue to pursue matching funds for Phase Two of Backed Hill Park. So recently, an application was submitted to the Chester County Conservation District's Trees for Watersheds Grant Program, requesting an amount of roughly $74,000 to help with the extensive native landscaping we're hoping to do at that site. So hopefully, sometime in the next few months, we'll hear if we're successful in that effort. Thank you to the township staff, fire company, police, Public Works, everyone, really. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort for the trunk-or-treat. It was a phenomenal turnout. The weather was unseasonably very warm, which I think helped with the turnout. There was a haunted house through the fire company with a hayride that culminated up here with the trunk-or-treat event. We had at least 100 people come out, and so just thank you to everyone who participated. It was a great community event.
I heard a rumor that the firehouse was very scary. Yeah, I see Chief Lewis smiling. I'll take that as a yes.
Thank you, Jay Leno. Zach, if you can give us an update on the planning commission?
Yeah, so we just rescheduled the planning commission meetings to avoid sort of the holiday season, a couple of conflicts there with holidays, so we just thought it best to bump the planning commission meeting back in November one week, and the December meeting up one week and one day. It'll be Tuesday, I believe, December 19th.
Next on the agenda, Dwayne Millen is here to speak to us regarding some activity at one of our parks. If you could maybe speak into the microphone, and hopefully people can hear you as compared to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, good evening to the board, staff, East Whiteland residents. Tonight, I'm here in my capacity as Captain Dwayne Millen in the Army Reserve, and I'm here tonight to present a certificate of appreciation to East Whiteland Township for some partnership activities that you've done with the United States Army. The context here is to maintain standards in the United States Army. All service members are required to pass physical fitness tests on an annual basis. So we often are looking for community partners where we can hold these events, which take a considerable amount of space, and we need a lot of variation in terms of track and field space. So, East Whiteland Township, we are very grateful for the use of the Battle of the Clouds Park this past year on three different occasions. I want to thank Donna for her kind assistance with helping us set those up, but we're very grateful for the use of the township's facilities so we can maintain our physical fitness standards. So this is going to be presented on behalf of the 424 Multifunctional Medical Battalion, which is headquartered in Newtown Square. So as further context, I would just note, this day and age, it's remarkable, but really 1% of the nation serves in uniform right now. So we rely heavily on community partners to help us do the mission on behalf of the country. So it is a tribute and a testament to East Whiteland Township that you've taken an interest in helping us do this, achieve what we need to do, so we are ready to go as the state and the community calls upon us. So the proclamation basically reads, "Certificate of Appreciation is presented to East Whiteland Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania, for valued community partnership in support of the 424th Multifunctional Medical Battalion and the United States Army. East Whiteland Township is lauded for providing park space for the conduct of physical fitness training by the 424 MMB. This allows the battalion and its individual soldiers to sustain the highest levels of readiness in order to serve community, state, and nation. In doing so, East Whiteland Township reflects great credit upon itself as a valued community partner of the 424 MMB and the United States Army." So we thank you very much for your partnership in this initiative.
And we thank you for your service and everyone in the reserve.
It's our privilege, absolutely.
This couldn't be better time with Veterans Day this Saturday.
Dwayne, is this part of the same group that runs along the Chester Valley Trail pretty much every Saturday or Sunday?
Some of that does overlap.
Okay, all right, yeah. I see. I was on a bike.
For everyone out there, if you don't recognize, Dwayne was former representative in this area for many, many years. I think, was it three terms?
Six terms.
You know, that was before I got here. I only saw three. Again, thank you. Next, we'll move on with board motions and resolutions. So Steve, if you can lead us on here on the budget. And Usha?
Well, yeah, the plan is to have Usha. We have, as has been done in the past, there's a presentation that Usha will run quickly through. Are we, yeah, there we're bringing it up. Yeah, the, again, the plan is that Usha will run through it quickly, and yeah, she needs the mic. And if there's any questions, we'll be happy to respond to them.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Scott. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Scott, and thank you, everybody, for being here. Today, we are, I'm going to go pretty quick, because we have been through this couple times already in our workshop meeting, so, but if you have any question, stop me, I'll be happy to answer you, but I'll try to do quick. We are presenting our 2024 operating budget. So this slide is pretty much about our important dates related to our budget. On October 16th, we did our workshop and met with, we met with our Board of Supervisor and all board members, department heads, and other staff members to discuss our operating budget. And then on October 23rd, we did the same thing with our capital budget. November 8th, which is today, we are presenting our preliminary budget for board consideration and approval. And December 13th, we will present this to board for their final approval. This slide is showing our revenue budget for 2024. For earned income tax, we are budgeting $12 million versus $11.5 million in 2023, an increase of 4.3% over last year. Local service taxes, we are keeping the same, $1.3 million for 2024, as it was in 2023. Real estate transfer taxes, same thing, we are keeping 750K, as it was in 2023. We are keeping these two line items same, because as of now, based on current collection, we don't see any significant increase in these two sources of revenue. Although it can change, but what we are saying, we want to keep as it is for 2023. Building permits, we are budgeting 750K for 2024 versus 500 in 2023, an increase of $250,000 over 2023. Real estate property tax, we are budgeting $857,000 versus $824 in 2023, a 4% increase over last year. Other revenue is $1.98 million versus $2.6 million in 2023. This is showing a decrease of 22.6%. Actually, it is not decreasing revenue, it's only because last year, we did two major transfer from sewer fund to general fund, due to our sewer employees were being paid from the general fund, so we had to reimburse from our sewer fund to general fund. And then another transfer we did for the debt services. So due to that, we were much higher last year. But if revenue to revenue, we are pretty close, if there was no transfer. That brings our total revenue to 17.6 million for 2024 versus 17.4 million in 2023, a very modest increase of 1.2% over last year.
Usha, if I can interrupt one second, just to answer some questions that may come forward. Recently, you may have seen that one of our neighboring townships, Turdiferneystown, is having discussions of a 48% tax increase, and also, they were looking at potentially incorporating a full 1% earned income tax on their residents over there, who currently have zero. And that would, that would have an impact on our revenue if that were implemented. There are roughly about 674 people that pay taxes to East Whiteland Township that live in TE, but it would appear as though that if anything of that nature will occur, it will maybe occur after the 2024 year. So we don't feel at this point in time, from the knowledge that we have, that it will have an impact on our current budget that we've projected at this point in time.
Thank you. Now, this is our, this pie chart to show you the sources of revenue by percentage to the total revenue. In other words, what source of revenue generates what amount of money? So if you look at that big section, that's our EIT, earned income tax. We get 60% of our revenue from EIT. Can you make it a little? Yeah, thank you. And then you see local service taxes, we get 88% of total revenue from local service taxes. Real estate transfer tax contribute 4%, building permits 4%, and our real estate property tax 5%, and all other revenue 11%. And all other revenue includes, like, there are many line items, cable, TV franchise, and, you know, pension aid that we get, small grants we get, and sale from police reports, fines for violation, and more, all many line items, dumps into one. They are not significant, but they, in combination, they are 11% of total revenue. This slide is about our expenditure budget. For 2024, we are budgeting $2.24 million in administration versus $2.2 million in 2023, 4.2% increase over last year. Fire, EMS, and courts, we are bursting $3.9 million versus $3.4 million last year, 13.6% increase. Planning and zoning, 507K versus 486K, an increase of 4.3% over last year. Police, 7.1 million versus 6.8 million in 2023, an increase of 4.2%. Public works, 2.7 million versus 2.6 last year, an increase of 6.4%. Debt services, we are bursting 504K versus 507 last year, a decrease of 5.5% because as we pay, our principal get is smaller, though interest on the smaller portion is a smaller amount to pay, is smaller obligation. Recreation is 365K versus 343K last year, a 6.4% increase over last year. So it brings our total expenditure to 17.3 million versus 16.3 million last year, and overall increase of 6.5%. Now, this 6.5% increase is mainly due to three factors. For police and fire contract, we, their salary and wages are 3.7, the increase in their salary and wages by 3.75% for their contract. Also, healthcare cost has gone up by 10%, and it's no surprise, healthcare cost is up everywhere, and all other insurance are up by about 10%. And then, third factor is, we have implemented two new positions, one in fire department. The budget has been incorporated in fire marshal position, that has been approved. Another position we budgeted in police department, which has been budgeted, but is still under consideration as far as hiring goes for community police. So these are the main factors that contributing to the 6.5% increase over last year. All other expenses, supplies, et cetera, they are not so significant, so those are the causes of the increase of 6.5%. Again, this pie chart is showing the allocation of expenses by department, so to show you what departments consume how much of our resources. So if you go, the blue is our police department, that takes 41% of our resources. Fire, EMS, and courts, 22%. And planning, zoning, 3%, administration, 13%. Recreation, 2%. Debt services, 3%, and public work, 16%. So this is to show you what department consumes how much of our resources. Now, I already talked about it, this is just in writing, explaining what I already said, what we have budgeted in our earned income tax, real estate, building permits. If you, anybody need more detail, why the reason behind it, we have data collected, we can show you and go over, send you, share with you if you need more information, why we are budgeting what's this amount and what's the reason. We work with our tax collector and...
Can I point out something to everyone that always asks this question?
Sure.
Please note the budget permits. We're not anticipating a significant increase in permit revenue for next year. It's a question we get all the time. How much building will occur?
Yes, that's very unpredictable, although Jack, he keeps some analysis on that, right? And you kind of know, like, what's coming up and not coming up. So I, we communicate, like, periodically, too. I think you will know more what...
Yeah, it's, as Usha just said, it's very unpredictable. Zach, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to add something, but it's, we look at construction activity that we know is coming or may be underway, what we think may happen, and it's really hard to predict when some of our corporations will need to have major work done in their labs or their office spaces, and so we don't try to budget for them, we just, we try to budget conservatively and kind of keep it on an even keel.
Now, I already mentioned, the increase, 6.5% increase in our overall cost is due to compensation, medical insurance, and other post-employment benefit. So that's pretty much explaining the same thing I already talked about, so I would not go unless somebody had a question.
A gentleman who has a question on the last topic we're having, if you could come forward and ask.
Mr. Chairman, board members. Brian Dietrich, I have been a resident of Malvern for 26 years. First board meeting I'm attending, and already I have a lot of questions. So playing off the last comment that we're conservative on the budget estimate, could you go back to the first slide, please, in the presentation?
Very close one?
That one. Building permits, it shows an increase of 50%. I know myself, people in the neighborhood, people that I talk with that are residents of East Whiteland Township, are tired of the building and growth in Malvern area and surrounding areas, tired of it. I don't know what the 50% increase in building permits represents. I'm a layman. Again, this is my first board meeting, but I see a number like 50%, and bells and whistles go off. I don't know how that compares to the 4% that we saw on the last slide. Is this doublespeak? What's the difference? And could someone else answer? Because, no offense, I'm having trouble understanding what you're saying.
Let me answer, let me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. Again, 50% increase in building permits, what is that for?
We, we try to budget at a, what I'll call a base...
Conservative, you used the word, conservative.
I did, and I'll use it again. It is a conservative estimate.
50%.
I don't want to argue over numbers, but...
The number's up there. We're not arguing over it.
Excuse me. Would you let the manager speak and answer your question before you interrupt again? Thank you.
There is a base level of construction activity that goes on in this township every single year. That brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars in building permit revenue. When we know new construction is going to happen, we then account for that in the budget. Next year, we know the Knickerbocker property is currently being developed, there will be building permits issued on that property. We also are anticipating a new apartment building in front of the Great Valley Corporate Center on Route 29. It's actually going to be discussed this evening. Now, whether that building permit is received next year or not, we don't know. What we cannot account for are large building permits. For example, this year, we've had a number of them from our corporate clients such as Jansen. Sometimes those permits in and of themselves are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. We do not budget for them. If you looked at our receipts for building permits this year, you would see they are significantly over the $500,000 budgeted figure, and they are also significantly over the $750,000 that we're budgeting for next year. We are conservative in that we do not want to build our budget relying on... We are conservative in that we do not want to build our budget relying on the ebbs and flows and the peaks and valleys of the permit. So that's why you and I can debate all night whether 50% is significant or not. But I would say in the context of our budget, it isn't.
What was the percent growth last year? You should have that figure. I can't understand what you're saying, excuse me. What was the person, for that line item that we're projecting 50% for this year? I'm wondering what the actual number was for last year. What is that then? I don't want to be Senate. I want to know what the number is while we're to gather together.
I can provide it if you would give someone an opportunity to talk, please. I think part of your comment earlier was, it seems, it seems like your point is that there's a lot of building going on and you prefer there to be less. Is that your underlying?
Do you think so?
I'm asking you a question.
I'm asking you, do you think that we have a lot of building?
I'm just going to give you a number then, because I don't want to debate you. But what we've been receiving the last five years, six years, seven years, significantly higher than that. So the point that I was hoping to make is that, to Steve's point about being a conservative number, we've been receiving much higher amounts historically over the last 10 years or so. We do not feel like we're seeing that same level of growth now. And our budget projections reflect that. That's the only point that I was hoping to make. I can give you the number that I think you're asking for if you'd like it. The 2023 actual was 1.89 million dollars.
1.89?
Yeah.
And you're budgeting 750 for the upcoming year?
Yeah, in the sense that we don't want to assume that there's going to be large projects that inflate that number. And I think that's what Steve was explaining. Just as an example, in 2017 or 18, I'm having trouble lining up here. It was close to 2.6 million. My point being in.
Lot of growth, right?
Well, not since then.
If I can answer you, it's not just growth. Yeah. We have a large corporate area in this township, Great Valley Corporate Center. There is continual tenant fit out, tenant rearrangement. That's all commercial work. And that, that's, I don't, I don't have and I won't have tonight the breakdown between residential and commercial. My guess, and it's just a guess, is the concern is the residential growth, not necessarily the commercial growth.
I know a lot of times people say it's commercial growth. And we're supposed to discount that, set that off to the side. I think there's a lot of growth everywhere, including, I understand, the yards development. I understand Clues and Strawbridge, the boat dealership is going to be torn down. And another facility, multi, multi-resident facilities going in there.
All I say is.
I have to interrupt you one second on that one. In late summer, this board met on two building projects along Route 30, including Clues and Strawbridge and the property directly behind the laundromat. And both properties and rezoning issues were taken off the table by this board in August, I think it was.
They required a change of zoning, which is a discretionary decision by this board. The board rejected them.
So in the next 10 years, you're saying that will not be turned over and made to a residential set of units?
I can't guarantee what's going to happen in 10 years.
That's the issue.
No, that's not the issue.
That is the issue.
This board voted down and did not accept that change. I'm, you can't go beyond what, what this board has, has done.
But we put 50% on and it was 2 million last year and.
But it's 50% that it's not residential. It's not necessarily residential. Which has indicated that a lot of it is commercial build out.
What percent is residential? You're making a comment, it's not a lot residential. Let's hear what the number is.
We, we don't parse that fine. We take a look at historical numbers, just as Zach described. And we don't break it out by commercial and by residential. And that varies wildly every year anyway. So it's, I don't know that any township budgets in the way that you're suggesting.
Well, the, the last thing I like, I'll say, and then I'll sit down. You may want to get a grasp on what percent is commercial and what percent is residential. Because that affects the residents like me of 26 years in Malvern. And it's not why I choose my family to live in Malvern, is to have all of this development and just incredible amount of expenditure that's allowed. And in our neighborhood, and we talk about this regularly, much too much development in the area. All I'll say, you can say hide behind the commercial all you want. You don't have a statistic for it, so you don't know what the percent is. So you may want to get a grasp on that.
Usha, I'm going to let you continue on with the presentation. If we have any questions, I think we'll address those at the end of your presentation.
Thank you, Don.
To keep you on track.
So where am I? Where was I?
You were on, we were on the expenditure.
Yeah, so. So this is pretty much explaining same thing what I already said, that our 6.5% increase in our total expenditures are due to those major factors. Compensation, 3.75% increase for police and fire contract as well as for non-uniform. Medical insurance has gone up by 10%. So is OPEB, other post-employment benefit by 10%. Our minimum, minimum municipal obligation has gone down by 7%. That is due to because, you know, when we provide our roster, how many implies we have on our payroll. So our actually calculates the number based on their smoothing process and they come up with the number. So we are, we have a saving there of 94K for this year versus last year. All our department heads do really good job controlling their overtime. So because of their good work, we are projecting 6% less than our last year overtime. Also, fire departments hire for part-time firefighters to tackle their overtime expenses. So because of all those extra work the head of departments have done, so our overtime has gone down. Information technology is 433K, 18% higher than last year. And that is mainly due to cybersecurity is costly everywhere. We budgeted 384K in our vehicle and equipment replacement that we do save some money every year for our amortization cost. Debt services, we have 503K for our 2020, 2024 debt payment. Our total outstanding data debt as of 2023 is 6.43 million. This is our workforce as of November 2023. We have 62 full-time position, 6.2 part-time position. A total of 69.2 FT as of, as of November 2023. When we do our audit, we reconcile our fund balances. So for our final audit, we have a total, grand total of 25 million in our fund balance, of which we have restricted 988,331 to highway and street project. And remaining has gone into on those line items. As you can see for tax rate stabilization, budget reserve, I'm not going to read. As you can see, it's very self-explanatory. Those amount, remaining amounts have been assigned to those project that we do every year. This brings to our final summary. This is, so as of November 8, 2023, we are budgeting 7.4 million in, 7.6 million in revenue and 7.4 million in expenses. And a surplus of 264K for 2024 compared to a 1 million surplus in 2023. And I, as I mentioned, that was due to, we had made transfer from sewer fund to general fund. For expense, because sewer implies were being paid from the general fund. And we had to reimburse from sewer fund to our general fund and also for debt services. Due to those two line items, we are hired by 1 million in total compared to last year. No new taxes are, no new taxes or tax increases are being proposed for 2024 budget. For 2024, I already mentioned, but it's just more detail here. We have asked for two positions, one in the fire department for fire marshal, another one for police department, for police, community police, for full-time position. The number has been budgeted, incorporated in our 2024 numbers. And the last bullet is saying like what we going to do with this, our budget. 2024 budget is focus, is to focus on maintaining a high level of emergency response services, increase park and rec services, continue efficiency in process improvement, staff development and update planning and service and, and more. So that's where our budget money going to go. So these are all going to be on the website. So who is not understanding, they can read there and come back to us, send email. You need more detail, backup, more than happy to provide. So I think it's all there on the website. So that's about it.
Don, any email questions?
No, there's not any questions. I've been checking.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Board, do you have any specific questions for Usha? No, I guess at this point in time, we can have a motion to approve the preliminary budget.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 preliminary budget. And, well, I'm going to do both and approve the advertisement for the 2024 preliminary budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Usha. You're up. Moving on to 3C.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution before the board this evening is for authorization to apply for the statewide local share account grant funding. This program has a maximum award of $1 million with no match requirement from the municipality, which makes it a very unique grant program as most require at least a minimum match amount. The use of these funds would be for the police department modernization project, as we're calling it, which is the initiative to explore potentially building a new police facility on the property. And just to clarify this, if you choose to move forward with this resolution, this is by no means moving forward with that project as a whole, but just pursuing grant funding to be able to help with that initiative should it move forward.
Seems pretty clear. Any questions, gentlemen? Any questions from the public? Would you like to make a motion, Peter?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, excuse me.
3C?
Approval resolution number 27 dash 2023. To after the local share count grant application.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Steve, tell us about our new park and recreation director.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. This action requested of the board is to ratify the hiring of our first full-time park and recreation director. We received, I'm not sure how many resumes, and there were a number of, of well-qualified people, of which we interviewed five individuals. And again, a number of them were very well-qualified. But this one individual really stood out, especially in the interview process. Was very impressive in his thoughtfulness and depth of answers and unique perspective, I'll say, on the questions that we asked. And we thought that he'd be a real asset to East Whiteland Township as we take our program and build it in the future. The young man's name is Lawrence Iacchio. He currently works for the city of Philadelphia in their park and recreation department. Has been there for nearly seven years. He has a degree from Temple University. And again, was very, very impressive in the interview process and has a lot of skills and experiences that we think will be a real, real benefit here.
And I understand he'll be putting together programs for all age groups, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, all age groups. You know, he's, he's very interested in diversity, equity, inclusiveness. And that includes all age groups. And that's, that's, that means everyone. And, and he's very interested in that and has done work in that area in the, in the city.
Rich, Peter, any questions?
None, no, resume look very good.
Yep. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to ratify the hiring of the park and rec director, Lawrence, whatever his last name was.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lawrence, aye, is ratified. Next, we'll have public hearing regarding the text design standard ordinance. Design standard only is what this will impact. It will not add new housing to the Route 30 corridor. Only the design aspects in that area will be affected. Bernadette?
Yes, just want to make sure you're okay. We're going to go into a public hearing. As noted on the agenda, this is a zoning text amendment related to the MF multifamily Route 30 overlay district, section 300, I'm sorry, 200 dash 39.4. And again, as Scott indicated, this is for the design standards only. You may have seen this earlier in the year where we had a rezoning also for the Clues and Strawbridge. That has come off the table. So this will affect only the multifamilies that are currently in the overlay. I'm going to mark a series of exhibits. B1 is the September 29th, 2023 filing with the Chester County Planning Commission. B2 is a September. B2 is a September 22nd, 2023 email to East Whiteland Township Planning Commission. B3 is the October 12th, 2023 email and letter to the Daily Local with the legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4 is the October 12th, 2023 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5 is the Chester County Planning Commission review letter. B6 is the proof of publication. And B7 is the actual ordinance. And I was gonna ask Zach just to kind of go through what those design standards were that were put together for this ordinance.
Sure, yes, so this really started with a request from someone who wanted to have an additional property added to the overlay district, the existing overlay district. And as we went through that process, we identified a number of, I'll say, improvements, bells and whistles, if you were, that we wanted to add to the ordinance. A lot of it was geared towards ensuring that the plan was consistent with roadway planning for Route 30, required them to incorporate certain traffic improvements along their frontage. We, we did add some language clarifying how height is determined, requiring better streets gaping in the front. There was some cleanup items, but mostly we had attempted to just add some better architectural standards. So that if any of the properties that are already zoned for these types of uses, that they would look attractive, as consistent as they can with surrounding, I'll say, local architecture and just varied materials, things like that. So nothing, nothing too out of the box, just trying to add some, I'll say, some, some better standards to something that was already in place.
And any tweaking going forward should not be that much of an issue, correct?
I wouldn't think so. Again, it's, it's an existing zoning district. This is just, this would be active to any new projects that would come in under that, but would not be adding any new properties that, to make it eligible for these types of uses.
Don, I read your lips. I hear we're live, so is there? In one second, so I guess there's no one on Zoom at this point in time. But in the meantime, anyone from the audience have any questions? Again, come forward, please.
Hi, Brian Dietrich, the 26-year resident, lives on 352 across from Immaculate College. So let me understand this if I could, and forgive me, I'm a layman. So what you're talking about is putting together the right standards with bells and whistles for development, including residential development in our area, but no development's going to occur. Am I correct on that?
You are not correct.
Okay, could you clarify?
I certainly can. There's an existing zoning district that permits multifamily development in certain areas of the township. That's an existing ordinance that's in place. So there are certain properties already along Route 30 that are eligible to be developed or redeveloped with multifamily uses. This ordinance would then apply to that existing zoning ordinance. It's the regulations that apply then to the map that would require those buildings to meet higher standards of architectural design. That is the only change really aside, there's no new properties being added. Any properties that are currently eligible for it, we continue to be eligible. So your question is whether we're allowing more development? We're not adding any properties that would be, it would be developed that aren't already evil?
You're just getting ready for it. Would that be a fair statement?
We're revising the regulations that apply to the areas of the township that are eligible.
Said in layman's terms, you're getting ready for more development and including residential development.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. The gentleman that was sitting next to me that had to leave handed me a note before he left. I just, I'm gonna read it to you. They, they want to build 380 units in Great Valley Corporate Center. Shoot that down. First time I'm hearing this, don't know what it's about. Could someone explain what the gentleman meant before he left?
That will be coming up later in the meeting to discuss in more detail.
So you want me to get up then at that point?
Yes, because we're in the middle of a public hearing on the, on this amendment. So it, it really has to, I have to keep it in line for the public hearing on this amendment.
Fair.
Yeah.
Fair.
Any other questions pertaining to this?
And Donna, I wanted to check, are you?
I'm not online yet, but I don't have any questions. I'm, I've only had one question and it's for today, I'm saying.
Okay.
Well, if they're live, they're not gonna have any questions because they haven't heard any of this at this point in time, so.
I'm sorry?
Or they'll have a lot.
Yes, we could certainly wait and see if they have any questions specific to this ordinance, which has been advertised on the, I believe, on the website, on the township website. So they may have questions related to that.
So I'll add, if, if anyone was just hearing this for the first time, we are on item 4A on public hearings regarding the zoning text amendment related to Route 30 overlay pertaining to design standards in that quarter. Does not pertain to rezoning or adding housing to that. And as such, are there any questions that you folks might have that you would like to ask at this point in time? Donna, nothing on there? All right. Brian?
Mr. Chairman and Board, since the Zoom is down and like you said, they don't even know what's been discussed to ask questions, would it make sense to table this until the general public who can't make, physically make it to the meeting? Here's what's being discussed.
I think Donna just indicated they're online now.
Do you want to start again from the beginning so they hear the whole discussion leading up to the vote?
I could certainly, again, indicate that the, the ordinance has been advertised. It has been on the township website and it's on the agenda. And as I indicated, it's a zoning text amendment related to the MF multifamily Route 30 overlay district, section 239.4. It's an ordinance for text amendment only, and it relates to design standards set forth in the ordinance. And those design standards include piers and hedges, concrete sidewalks, bike lanes, streetlights, benches, bus shelters, supplying a conservation plan and environmental impact assessment, meeting the requirements of the subdivision of land development, architectural elevations, incorporating a variety of materials, color palettes, projections of recesses. So it's all laid out in the ordinance. And if anyone had any specific questions as to the ordinance, we could certainly answer those.
And just so you know that this was discussed, was it last month? Or two months ago in detail as well? So it's, it's coming up for the second time, just so you're aware of that.
And it's been through the planning commission a couple times because we took it to the planning commission when originally there was a rezoning ordinance portion of it too. And then they saw it again.
Funny how Zoom just came up and you're going to a vote.
Again.
For the people that weren't, weren't able to hear what's being discussed other than your short, very brief Cliff Notes version run there. So again, I think the appropriate measure is to table it until the people that are online get to hear the whole discussion.
Again, I can ask, anyone on Zoom have any questions? We could certainly answer those. Carol Rapp, I know you're on, can, do you have any questions on this hearing?
Yeah, I didn't hear it. I mean, yeah, it's hard to have a question when you, we just came on as you fit in whatever you fit in. We didn't hear a word. So that Cliff Notes, I agree that the Cliff Notes doesn't really tell me what happened during the hearing.
My Cliff Notes was the longer version, but we could certainly have Zach talk about it again.
Zach, why don't you go through?
Please, understand, please, in order.
Zach, why don't you run through it for everyone again?
All right, I think I'm good. So this is an existing zoning district in the western portion of the township around Plainbrook Road and Route 30 area, generally where the Wawa is, if you're familiar. The ordinance that permitted the new apartment building in that location. This was developed a number of months ago to just add additional design standards to the existing ordinance. So this would apply then to any properties that are currently zoned within this overlay district. It would not add any properties to the overlay district. And as Solicitor explained, it adds some additional architectural standards. Requires, one thing that I didn't mention is conservation plan. There's sort of more plan requirements, more information upfront for analysis and consideration during the conditional use process that's associated with this ordinance and this use in that overlay district. And a lot of what it requires kind of built on some of the previous language that requires streetscape amenities like benches, sidewalks, bike lanes, trash receptacles, things like that. Kind of running through here, there's some additional clarity on height and a requirement to step back the building facade if it's above three stories. Kind of like reduce the massing and make it not seem like such a tall building, for example. Let's see here, there's a requirement for some perimeter, I'll say, landscape features around parking lots, like a peered, a pure fence hedge, which is essentially a fence with piers, like brick piers that link the, the sections of fence together. And providing a landscape plan. So again, some of this is really just about getting more information upfront for review and consideration during the conditional use review process. And just kind of building on previous or existing code language.
Carol, I know you, you've heard this one before, but I don't know if you've got any additional questions that you might have?
I don't know, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and for anybody who didn't catch it, this has, this is the same ordinance essentially that was, has been discussed at a number of previous meetings, planning commission, board of supervisors, et cetera. So this is, if it sounds familiar, that's because it has been talked about a number of times.
Right, right. Okay, do we have? Brian?
Chairman, I'm curious, how many people normally Zoom in? It looks like we have one person on the Zoom. How many people normally Zoom in?
We haven't, I can answer that actually, since I watch that. We have, and I keep track of it. We have anywhere from, right now, we have three, four people on. We have anywhere from four to maybe eight to 10.
Brian, that's a very good question because we have been trying all sorts of different things to try to get people to come to the meetings, to come and listen to what the board has to say so that they are informed and they understand and they can ask the questions ahead of time. Okay? In other words, I'll give you an example. We had three years ago, a, a meeting, a conditional use hearing for billboards. It went on for months and months. Still getting complaints today that, that we should not be voting for a billboard. But that, the, the meetings occurred three years ago. That's an extreme case, but again, it's a good point. We really would love to have a lot more people come in, ask the questions, understand it. We can understand your thoughts and feelings. And then we, we are, we end up really making better decisions when we hear from people during that process.
Apparently you need the input from people because what I hear you saying is without the input of those people, you went ahead with the billboards the way they are, including the one on 29 and 30, which is a deplorable mess.
I'm saying it helps in our decision to hear what people have to say upfront.
Where I was going with the question on how many people normally Zoom in, I know if I was zooming into this tonight and it was offline for that period of time, which is long, I would have clicked and gotten off of it. My point is if there's normally up to 10 people and we now have one that's on because of the technical difficulties with Zoom, would it make sense to table this until people have a fair chance to Zoom in and hear the discussion on this before you go to vote?
And Scott, one of the options the board does have is we can continue on the record. I don't have to re-advertise because it's continued on the record. See if anybody else has any comments and you can vote at the next meeting. There's no deadline to vote for this.
Okay, fine, we'll continue it till the next meeting?
I'm sorry, what's the date in December? Can I have a motion to continue?
12/13.
12? Oh, December 13? I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Can I have a motion to continue the hearing till December 13th, 2023?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll put that on the website that it's continued. It doesn't, it does not need to be re-advertised since we continued on the record. And if anybody else has any questions, they could certainly come to the December 13th meeting.
Yeah, I want just to add all of the ordinances, all the plans, all the land development plans, all that's available on our website so you're able to review a copy of it.
All right, thank you, thank you.
So that hearing is closed and we do have another hearing. And I'd like to open that hearing. That is for an intermunicipal liquor license transfer for the Giant Company LLC to 225 Lancaster Avenue. And there is counsel present for that intermunicipal transfer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellen Freeman. I'm an attorney with Flaherty &amp; Doehra. We are a law firm based out of Pittsburgh, and all we do is liquor licensing. So I'm gonna give you guys a brief presentation on Giant's plans this evening. But if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to elaborate on anything liquor law related.
And Ellen, I'm gonna mark a series of exhibits because, and I know you have one also. I'm gonna mark the exhibits, but Scott gets some tea, I'm sure. I'm gonna mark as Board, one is the September 18th, 2023 letter to the township manager requesting the intermunicipal transfer of restaurant liquor license R dash 12656. B2 is the September 25th, 2023 letter to the newspaper with the attached legal notice of the 10/11/23 hearing to consider the request. B3 was the proof of publication of 9/27 and 10/4. B4 is the October 4th, 2023 email for the request for continuance to this evening. B5 is the October 12th, 2023 letter to the newspaper with the attached legal notice for the hearing to consider the request. B6 is the proof of, I'm sorry, B6 is the proof of publication for October 18th and October 25th. And B7 is the resolution that the board will consider this evening. So just for the audience, this is a public hearing for, and the board may take action to vote upon the request of the Giant Company for township approval of an intermunicipal restaurant liquor license transfer from I Seize It Inc. doing business as appetizers at 2348 East Lincoln Highway, Coatesville, Chester County. And that's in Calm Township to 225 Lancaster Avenue, Malvern, Chester County, to East Whiteland Township. And it's, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the township concerning the applicant's intent to acquire and utilize the intermunicipal liquor license transfer.
Thank you. And what the township manager is passing out right now would be the applicants only two exhibits. The first exhibit would be the floor plan, which is the overlay of the entire grocery store as it's built today. And then the second floor plan is just an enlarged version of what would be the licensed premises, should the board approve the liquor license transfer this evening. So if you're familiar with the Giant in East Whiteland Township, Giant plans to insert what they have coined as their beer garden in the front right-hand side of the grocery store. right-hand side of the grocery store. So again, if you're familiar with that, you walk into the right side of Giant's grocery store. That's currently where the flower section is. And then Giant's direct orders, which will be built out into this beer garden area. Now, this is not Giant's first liquor license in Pennsylvania. If you've been into almost any other Giant food store in Pennsylvania, you probably have seen their beer garden utilized. They have 143 stores currently in Pennsylvania that operate a restaurant liquor license. So 143 stores that are operating in essentially the same way as I will present this evening. And even with 143 stores with liquor licenses and their operations in the alcohol industry spanning since 2009, they have an outstanding record with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and the Bureau of Liquor Enforcement. They're very proud of their gold standard record. And the way they maintain such a good record in Pennsylvania and the other communities that they serve, is they really do have, they go above and beyond what the liquor code requires licensees to put in place with regard to their safety policies. So the first and most important is that they have a 100% carding policy for all their alcohol sales. So no matter what age you are, one of the associates is going to ask for a license or passport or other form of identification. In addition to that, that form of identification is then put through a card scanner transaction device. And that's just a second step in order to ensure that the associate has calculated, calculated the birthdate rights and to make sure that that's a valid ID, and that it's not expired. So that's sort of the second safety policy that they put in place. The third is that they have security cameras that are monitoring all of the beer and wine that's in the area, as well as the registers. They're going to capture every sale on a, on a security camera. All of the associates that are going to work within that area will have gone through the ramp training. That's the responsible alcohol management program. So those individuals will all have gone through training to know how to spot a fake ID, how to spot visibly intoxicated person, and most importantly, I think, how to decline a sale. You know, that does come up in their job, and they need to be ready and prepared for someone who may not be so happy that they're declining the sale and how to react to that. This grocery store is open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. The wine and beer sales are only Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So there's a little bit of a time delay in the mornings. At 10:00 PM each night, along with the grocery store, the beer doors are locked. So those are in a secured location. Now, Giant only sells beer and wine at all of their stores. They are permitted to sell liquor under their liquor license. They do not sell any sort of spirits whatsoever. They have no plans to do that. Because they operate a restaurant liquor license, they do have to allow for on-premises sales. So you'll notice that there's 30 seats within that licensed premises. 30 seats is a liquor code requirement, so they have to have that seating in there. And again, another PLCB policy is that they have to allow for on-premises sales. Giant doesn't want to be a local bar. They don't want to have to do this, but they do have to comply. So they do have a max drink that you're allowed to purchase, which is two 12-ounce beers or one 8-ounce glass of wine. And that's just kind of how it's poured. The seating area is in a position by the registers that this policy is known by the associates. They're, they're known to watch for it. That's why the seating area is where it is, so that anyone at the register can easily monitor if anyone's opening a beer. At the seating area, you'd be very surprised to hear, it does not happen often. They have done some calculations in their 143 stores. It's about 2% of all of their sales that they notice are actually being consumed on premises. And that's, you know, that's all of the beer garden sales. So take that for what it is. The policy is well-maintained. It's, there's signage to that effect. There's no happy hours. There's no encouragement to drink on premises. Obviously, their main practice is to sell to go, as a convenience to their customers. So they are permitted to sell 192 fluid ounces of beer to go, which is roughly two six-packs in a single transaction, and 3,000 milliliters of wine to go, which is roughly four bottles of wine. So they do have a limitation in place. You know, certainly if a customer wants to purchase more, they would have to leave the premises, come back and make a second sale. Or, as you guys are probably aware, there's distributor right next door, or wine and spirit store right next door. They can make their, their bigger purchases elsewhere. So this is really, again, just as a convenience to its customers. Anyone who might be doing their grocery store haul and wanting to just pick up a six-pack, Giant would like to offer that to their customers. So Giant certainly understands the sensitive nature of selling alcohol. They don't want to jeopardize their reputation here in the community by selling in a haphazard manner. So, you know, these policies that I've stated tonight are, will be put in place pending an approval. Welcome any questions, certainly from the board and the public.
And Ellen, could you just explain that it's also, this is also subject to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board?
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you. So pending an approval tonight, we would apply with the Liquor Control Board. That's when that orange placard would go into the window. And then the PLCB does a whole investigation into Giant and their premises as well.
Have you had, have you had any issues with your Exton store that sells beer?
I'm not aware of any issues at that store.
I don't have any questions. I think it'd be a good addition to clean up the store and also add some competition to the other grocery stores that have the same services.
Yeah, actually, just to that point, I should mention that when Giant does a remodel of this sort of caliber, the whole store gets a facelift. So they'll really go through and, you know, if they're going to be in there with construction anyway and renovation, they might as well do the whole store. And everything, I believe, happens in the evening, so it will not disrupt any customer purchases.
No questions.
I have no further questions. Donna, any, anyone on Zoom? Are there still only one person there? Okay.
Well, I'm happy to hear nobody dropped off, then, because that would be offensive.
Any questions from the audience? Hearing none. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license from intermunicipal liquor license to the Giant Company for the Giant at 225 Lancaster Avenue.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just as a follow-up to Ellen, there is a resolution attached to their package of the exhibits. We will provide that to you once it's fully signed. Thank you.
Moving onward to motion to award John Neal.
Okay, we had the bids accepted Monday for the 1997 Case Backhoe. The winning bid was $22,825. Very happy with that number. So we're asking for an approval for that sale.
Sure. Peter?
I love talking equipment, so I'll make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of 1997 Case Backhoe for the price of $22,825.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any guesses?
Next item was, we had the bid opening for the Route 29 Signal Performance Measures Green Light Go Grant. We are recommending that we reject those bids. They came in substantially higher than we were expecting. And we'd like to rebid that project with some adjustments in scale and size to try and get it within our price range.
Do we need to make a motion?
So?
Do we need to formally reject them?
I think we should formally reject the bids that were accepted on the second, that came in on the second.
Right, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to reject all bids submitted on the Route 29 Traffic Signal Performance Measures Project.
No second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we're also asking for permission to re-advertise that, to amend it.
Motion to approve re-advertising.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the third item is, we're asking to award the Ravine Road Streambank Stabilization Project to Flyway Excavating for $208,125. We had eight bidders on that project, and it was very competitive. So we're happy with that. That rebuilds the stream banks that are starting to erode into the road. It's around 500 feet of, of the edge of the road. It gets, the stream gets moved a little bit and bar grille, that's it.
Refresh me, you're going to start that in March or after March?
Our, the way our permit is written, it has to be done by the end of March.
End of March, it is.
So it's probably going to start in January.
Okay.
John, will there be road closures during that time?
Yes, there will be a full detour for that. It's not going to take that long with a full detour. If we had to deal with traffic, it would substantially lengthen that job, so.
Okay, yeah.
Will this work, will this work qualify for our MS4?
We tried, we tried every way we could, but rock armor is basically what this is, and it's, it's not an acceptable MS4 treatment for stream bank.
All right.
Rich, would you make a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'd make a motion to award the Ravine Road Streambank Stabilization to Flyway Excavating $208,125.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thanks, John. Moving on to Section 6 and Planning and Development. Mr. Varner, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. This first item, 6A, regarding the master plan for redevelopment in the Great Valley Corporate Center, is actually going to be tabled this month. We circulated a draft resolution with some conditions and are currently working through some comments with the applicant. So this will likely be back on in, well, it will be back on in December. There's an extension under B4 below. So with that, nothing further to discuss. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I'll move on.
No questions for me?
No.
Donna, any up there?
The, oh, yeah, so there, I guess there was a question earlier, which I think we heard the comment from Mr. Dietrich read the comment. This is, I believe, the item that you were referring to, with there being no action or activity on it. Is there still something you'd like to say?
It's being discussed in December.
It will be.
We can cover that.
Sure.
I'll hang on to his note until.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Zach, when, when did this project begin?
That's an interesting question. There was a, you're talking about the, the corporate center redevelopment?
Mm-hmm.
There was an ordinance passed a number of years ago before my time. So I don't know the date off the top of my head. I want to say 2015, 16, maybe into 17.
Before I came in near either, so two of us, it goes back way back.
Yeah, so it goes back, it's for the previous ordinance, the previous master plan that was, that was actually approved, had a much larger scope of development. We since revised the ordinance to downsize the scope of that development, worked with the applicant actually to reduce the height, limit the number of uses, reduce the scope of the, I'll say, the geographic area associated with the ordinance. So what we have before us, and which we'll talk about in December, is I would say half, half the scope of development in terms of like an overall square footage. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. This is, this has been out there for a long time, but this current plan is much, much smaller than what was originally envisioned by Liberty, who was the owner at the time.
Okay, good. Brian?
Apologies, I didn't know we were going to.
Well, yeah, we kind of talked about it. Thanks, Scott.
We're just.
Yes, I'm just wondering, how many units, now that it's been greatly reduced, how many residential units will there be?
Yeah, other than, I don't have the exact number, but it's right around 400.
Right around 400?
Yeah. Some of which will be age restricted, some will not be age restricted.
Good, good. That'll help a lot. 400 units being developed.
Correct.
Thankfully, we don't have a breakdown between corporate and residential. Thankfully. Unbelievable. I respectfully request that the board listens to the people of the community. I, I feel like I'm the agitator here, and I apologize for that. But everyone I talk with is tired of the development in our area. I grew up in Wayne. I know Ardmore and all places heading to the east. We're turning into an Ardmore. We're turning into an area where you're going to go half a block and there will be another traffic light. I loved Malvern when I first moved here 26 years ago, because it was a green space. I grew up in, I was born in 1960, and I remember 1970, when my mother said, "Let's go out to the Exton Mall." Everybody said, "Go out to the Exton Mall." That's in the middle of nowhere. It was trees and woods all the way out and an occasional farm. And we're now building 400 units at the drop of a hat in the area. I just respectfully request that the board consider what we're turning the area into.
Thank you. Moving on to 6B.
Turn my microphone on. 6B is a series of extensions. There's four of them. One I mentioned, but I'll circle back to. The first is for the Bishop Tube redevelopment. The applicant has offered a, an extension until March 31st of 2024 to consider the plan. I imagine there'll be some questions, so if it's, works best, I'll just run through them all, and we can answer any questions on them collectively. Does that work? The first one, Bishop Tube, extension of the final plan until March 31st, 2024. There's a subdivision on Old Valley Road, sort of at Spring Valley and Old Valley, preliminary slash final subdivision plan. It's just one lot being carved into, into two. They've offered an extension until January 31st of 2024. They've recently resubmitted, and that plan is under review. The Chester County Intermediate Unit over here at 40 Moore's Road, that's also a preliminary slash final plan, and they've offered an extension until January 31st, 2024. Also recently resubmitted, plan currently under review. And the next one here is the one that we, we're just talking about. This is a, an extension on consideration of the master plan for this redevelopment project until the December 13th meeting.
Okay. Do we have any questions from Zoom?
We do. Go ahead, Carol.
Yep. Hi, thank you, Carol Rapp, 89 Village Way. Just want to reiterate, our Bishop Tube community would like you to vote no on that Bishop Tube redevelopment plan. So I just wanted to voice that again. Thank you.
Carol, just again, just, this is an extension.
I know, I know what it is, but we just want to.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah. No, we just want, we're going to show up every month and ask that you guys vote no, whether the decision is in front of you right this meeting or not, you know?
Well, you know, if you guys didn't show up every single month, we would have nobody here, except lawyers and developers and John Neal now. All right, thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
So are there any questions at this point from the public? Nope. Would you like to make an aggregate motion, Rich?
Sure. Make a motion to accept an extension of time for Bishop Tube until March 31st, 2024. Old Valley Road until January 31st, 2024. The Chester County Intermediate Unit until January 31st, 2024. And the master plan of the Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment until December 13th, 2023.
Peter?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All pass. Hey, John. Zoning and Code Enforcement, John Matea, thank you.
For the, uh, upcoming month, we only have one application that's gonna be before the board. It's the zoning hearing board case number 202307 for Si Temple. It's a special exception to redevelop the tract of ground at 152 to 162 Plainbrook Road in the Village Mixed Use District, uh, to allow the uses associated with a religious use. It's allowed under a special exception to the zoning code of East Whiteland Township. Um, see, they have representatives here this evening if you have any questions, um, comments for them.
I see no reason for opposition on my point of view.
Uh, same, I see no reason to send our solicitor unopposed. I think the zoning hearing board is more than capable to handle it.
Also in agreement.
Thank you. Uh, under updates, uh, proactive enforcement continues throughout the township. Uh, in the past month, after issuing several warnings for violations of property maintenance code for inoperative vehicles on private properties, three non-traffic citations have been filed in district court for non-compliance and five properties complied and removed or, or brought into compliance six vehicles. Residents are reminded that all vehicles kept on residential property must be properly registered, inspected, and insured and must not be in disrepair or disassembly. Also, uh, recently in cooperation with our Public Works Departments and the residents at a field book development, we were able to get, uh, several dead or dying trees removed and maintained along Moores Road that were creating a hazard to the, uh, motoring public and the surrounding properties there. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Moving on, uh, public comments, um, if there are any at this point in time. Just a reminder of the three-minute limitation associated with this agenda piece. Donna?
Yes, we have a message from Carol, uh, for Carol Rapp, go ahead.
Yes, hi, um, so I just have a question about the rules, which I, I can say I totally support. Um, except for number six, I'm a little concerned about number six where it says, uh, questions must be directed at witnesses and not board members or other speakers. Um, but the public coming to these meetings, part of that has always been to be able to ask questions. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand what number six rule means.
I, I think, I think it was done at a time when, um, it, as part of a public hearing, normally you would ask the witness who's testifying the question, but it does go on to say, um, and not board members or other speakers. If there are no witnesses, then each speaker must give public comment without interrogating someone else in the room. So it's not a matter of, you could certainly ask a question of the board of supervisors and they have the right to give you an answer or just take it under advisement.
Okay, 'cause yeah, that's part of the whole public comment portion of a meeting, I would think, would be for the, um, residents to be able to come in and ask questions, you know, or put them in front of the board or whatever. So I, I just wanna clarification on that. That was all I had, though, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Any other questions?
Hello, hi, Barb Arnold, 31 Fonstock Road. I also have a couple of questions about the rules, um, and number six was one of mine. And just, just to clarify what you were saying, do you mean that just during the public hearing, that's, that, that's when you're referring to witnesses?
Yeah, normally when you have a, like a conditional use hearing, uh, you have a witness and that, yeah. You would literally ask a question of the witness who's testifying rather than the board members at that time, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then under number 13, it says residents, taxpayers, or designated legal counsel will be required to register for the meeting. Um, how, how would you register? I mean, did, or, I don't understand the.
I think these were actually written when we first started the pandemic, when that, that first started. So I think that we were going to at one point in time have people register to talk, to keep it in order. So, I mean, that's probably what that means at this point.
Okay, all right, so it's kind of NA, maybe? Okay, all right. And then my other question was just about number one, it says each speaker must be a resident or taxpayer of East Whiteland Township. So, um, does, does this mean, can somebody outside the township speak at a time other than public comment?
Normally, the, uh, the Board of Supervisors has a discretion to let anyone speak. Normally what ends up happening is they ask that the East Whiteland Township residents speak first and then if somebody from another township wants to add something, they certainly usually allow them to speak. Um, but it usually is East Whiteland residents first.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, as you know, Maya Van Rossum has helped our organization tremendously and we also have a couple of other people in our Clean and Green Bishop Tube group who are not residents of East Whiteland but have expertise or they live in the next town over. And I just wanted to make sure that they would be able to speak at, at this meeting, you know, in, in assisting our efforts.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you very much for clarifying.
Moving on, um, Rich?
Actually, could, uh, Steve and I wanted to, since some of the people on the Zoom weren't here for the, uh, budget, we just wanted to ask if they had any questions on the budget and reaffirm the motions you had done on the budget. Because I think we came on after that. So if anyone on the Zoom has questions about the budget, John, Carol, or Martin, do you have questions on the budget?
I do not, this is Carol, no, I do not.
Any other?
No, I do not.
Okay, Martin? He said no? He said no? Are you sure? So just in abundance of caution, I just ask that we reaffirm those, both those motions now that we've heard from those on the Zoom to approve the 2024 preliminary budget and approve the advertising for the 2024 preliminary budget.
Motion to reaffirm the earlier motion of, to approve the 2024 preliminary budget and the advertisement for the 2024 preliminary budget.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Reaffirmed.
Don Glasso, 100 Church Road, um, just was curious about the update. I heard him say that you had ticketed some of the abandoned vehicles, but not all. Uh, matter of fact, I saw you guys have your, have a walk through the field, uh, I think a couple of days ago. I'd have to pull it up on my security camera, but, yeah, yeah, we, a group of you has walked literally past an abandoned vehicle with 2011 registration sticker, green growing on the tires and no, not one person noticed it, uh, you know? And then you say you took down trees, but there's a tree that's been dead for two years that one of the, part of it fell on our vehicles, we were cutting it, we got called by the police and that tree still stands, so, just curious of.
This is in Brennerrin, right?
Yeah, it's Brennerrin, but Brennerrin isn't Brennerrin now, remember? It's East Whiteland Township, 'cause we're not, we're not separate to the rest of the rules of East Whiteland.
Okay.
Please don't refer to us as Brennerrin, we, we're the same, we're not, you can't just say, hey, all of a sudden now you are a single entity, E.V. Whiteland, if it's not classified as a single entity of East Whiteland. Just, 'cause there's a lot of other things going on in this township, like the guy on Plainsbrook and Sweetsford Road that has about four or five abandoned vehicles and burned two trees down in his yard and, and you can see the ash pits, but they weren't done in a chimenea and you had him take down his chimenea. So like, this is this.
Okay, um, what, if we can have a recap of what has been done and as I had indicated, I think I may have spoken to you before, is it, our team is looking at a lot of the issues that you brought up and John brought up at the previous mess, meeting?
I'm John, that's Steve.
Okay, uh, Steve then. Um, but we are looking into it and we're making our way and we'll eventually probably end up sitting down with you and everyone once we collect everything. So we're working on it, okay? We're working on it. So again, what I, what I think would be best is, is if you can, if you can, if you can email specific items that you have concerns on and then get them over to John, then we can.
Honestly, my concern isn't, like, I, I want Tom to have his abandoned vehicle. I, I don't want, I don't care about people's abandoned vehicles, this is the whole thing. Well, I, I don't care, and, but you're only focusing on a little small square of East Whiteland Township. That's my problem. That's my problem. 'Cause I, I don't care about the abandoned vehicle and I don't, I understand you guys are busy and there's like a line on the paperwork to get a tree cut down. But the, but the thing is, is that you're just singling out a little triangle. It, it's not, it's not fair, that's what's, that's what's happening. And, and you're ticketing people and we can just go through things of, it's just not fair. It's not fair, it's not being equally enforced throughout the township, that's our problem.
Well, I'm not sure, well. I, I don't, I don't know how you, I don't know how you know that it's not being fairly enforced elsewhere because I would say that it is.
The, the whole time you've gone through the park, two trees down, uh, early, over the course of the weekend, three, two weekends ago, not one time did anybody stop by and enforce the same thing that you're telling us that we need to be enforced. And, and I lived at Conestoga Road, 165 Conestoga Road for over nine years and I, I'll admit that I had fires for nine years down there without a chimenea and that's, that, that's, that's there. That is the next resident to this building. And, and not one, he, in nine years did I ever get told I couldn't have a fire. And that's what I want people to do, I, I really wanna stay out of other people's business, honestly. But when you're, my problem is, is when you don't equally enforce it, that's my problem.
Mackenzie Walsh Pearson, also 100 Church Road, uh, if I could articulate John's thoughts a little better, I think what he's most upset about is the fact that the excessive scrutinization that has recently taken place in Brennerrin for things that have been allowed for, on record, decades. We have police officers, who I'm sure you guys could pull body footage of, coming over to the house telling residents who purchased a home over 20 years ago with a shed out back, saying that due to new ordinance changes, sheds need to be relocated or removed. Why is this when their neighbors right across the way have a shed an equal distance off of the backyard of their home? And no mention was made to any of them. This is his argument, the jagged line as to where the scrutinization is taking place and as to why. Because, and I'm sure you guys have been made well aware from Township Police, many phone calls have been made, phone calls made on birthday parties, pig roasts, wedding anniversaries, Fourth of July parties, Easter egg hunts, regular old Friday night get-togethers of a dozen residents or so. Like John said, guy burnt two trees down and is now burning his stumps, probably up to next week. He's burning the stumps 'cause it's way cheaper than a root grinder, face it. Nobody's been over to his house. I work right up the street at KNS next to Wawa. I take test drives for eight hours a day right by smoldering roots. No police officers, no cops, no nothing. As soon as four or five members of my community with their children wanna get together and have a little fire and some marshmallows, not only are the police called, tanker shows up to hose down the smoldering three-foot contained fire in a pit with water buckets next to it. Talk about towing cars other places, you come and ticket cars out back of my house. But my neighbors that have broken down cars, two doors down, broken down cars, years out of inspection, you don't touch them. The people with cars in other parts of Township grass, you don't touch them. You focus on our triangle. That's why John's upset, that's why Steve's here. That's why the other members of our town, of our little community that were here in the last meeting that didn't get a chance to speak and had to leave for the, the children, that's why we're all here. It needs to stop. The gentleman who was here earlier in the green shirt made plenty of good points. You all sit at that table, you represent and reflect our best interests. You have just about every speaking member of the community speaking out against what you're doing. We wanna know why you continue and we expect meeting, minutes on the next meeting because, Scott, you've spoken to John and Steve, we expected minutes this month. And frankly, if we don't get them next month, we're gonna feel ignored.
I think at this point in time, again, they're going through a number of issues that were pointed and raised out from the previous meeting, okay? And I don't know exactly where they are in terms of finalizing answers and getting answers for you to sit down and talk with everybody to what they've found. John, can, can you give me a, a timeframe that we can kind of look at to, to try to sit down with these folks and go through things?
Mr. Chairman, all activities and discussions that have been going on have been going on department-wide throughout the township, so we have all the parties involved, whereas the police, Public Works, the Building Codes Department, um, and Administration. But we are coming up with a game plan on how to do this. The items that we did out there, and I've been out there probably once or twice a week for, on following up on previous complaints. The municipality has gotten numerous compliments, uh, whether they were, we were called up when we're on site and approached by residents or residents that were calling and thanking us. Uh, sidewalk repairs are ongoing, vehicles being removed, some houses being repaired, but there's still a lot of work there. And of course, as you well know, uh, enforcement goes on throughout the township, especially when we receive complaints or issues. Um, so there's no, um, a violation of the code is a violation of the code, no matter where it occurs in the township. And we take the necessary steps for voluntary compliance, the reason why we issue warning letters and try to work with residents on timelines and things like that to bring things into compliance.
Is there, is there a timeframe where you think we can collectively finish what you folks have started and try to meet with, with everyone?
I think we could probably try to set something up for next week.
Gentlemen, does that, does that work in your timeframe? Again, if you can leave your numbers or emails, all right, then someone from the township will reach out to you to schedule something so we can sit down and go through it, okay? I, I'm, I'm sorry, you, you'll need to come forward and speak into the mic and, and again. And again, I, I, I'm not, I'm, just keep in mind, I'm not saying we're not gonna, we're not ignoring you. We're just saying we can schedule something next week and address you guys. But that's what we're hoping for, because, I mean, literally, I got a list of all the things that we do with the, with the community there. I mean, I'm sure you, you've lived there before. You, you've ever lived in Brennerrin? Well, it, it's changed and the community right there, they, it, it's amazing. They get together, we like to have a little fire, get together, cookouts. And there's, there's only a couple of the, no one's not invited, but for some reason they don't like us. And I have a list of things that I want you to, to think about that we do out there on a regular basis as a community. We never cause problems, even we invite police out, whoever, everybody's welcome. And now all of a sudden, because you get a couple of complaints about people, I catch one family throwing trash in the field and I say something about it, now they keep complaining every time we're out in the field having a get-together, whether it be a birthday party, wedding, whatever.
Right.
And they complain, complain, complain. I'm sure, I know you just get upset because you get tired of hearing it. But it's not, it's not like we're, we're being a wreck. It's the cops, the police have been out there many a times and seen that. It's been well-maintained, well-supervised, under control. And we're not loud, but we're not being reckless. We're not causing any problems. It's just that because they have an agreement against me for catching them or saying something about throwing trash in the field instead of putting it in the trash cans, now they call, or because they don't like us having a tent party, teaching the kids how to camp. Or because they don't like the bouncy houses for the kids, but they want to complain.
These, these are, these are the important issues that we want to sit down with you and talk to, to you, and, and try to resolve.
Yeah, because these are things we've been going on for years.
So again, as I mentioned once before, if you can put that list together and maybe even get it over to Donna or, or whatever, we can.
Well, I got a small list just written down on the cards right here.
Okay, but, but those, those are the issues that we'll, we'll discuss when we get together in more, in more details. And hopefully we get resolutional on both sides.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds fair. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
And Scott, I just wanted to address somebody, I think, I forgot who mentioned about the minutes. Yes, the minutes from last month are approved this month, and then they get on the website. So it's not that we're ignoring you. We just, we're, the, I'm sorry?
We're two months out.
Yeah, the way it works is you, you had the meeting in October, they're approved. They just approved them tonight, then they'll hit the website. That's how it works. It's not that anybody's ignoring you.
Yeah, it's, it's just one month.
No, it's just one month, and you are mentioned in the minutes when they're, when you see them. They are.
But it's not a transcript either. It's not a word for word, just so you know. It's like the gist of what happened, okay? Because some of it I didn't get, because the people don't come up, and when people holler from the thing, I don't record it when you. They'll be on, once they're approved tonight, they'll be on tomorrow morning.
Thanks, guys. Consent agenda. Peter, would you read it? Thank you.
I would love to read the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, if there are no further public comments. First on the consent agenda, approve the meeting minutes from October 11th, 2023. Ratify payment of bills in the amount of $504,000, $400, $504,001.34. Accept the treasurer's report as of September 2023. Approve the BVSPCA contract for five years at $5,600 each years plus other charges per. Is it stray or stay?
Right.
Stray and, oh, okay. Stray and use of service. Ratify mail engagement letter approval to conduct 2023 audit for the amount of $32,000. Approve carpet purchase for detective and lieutenant offices by leaf flooring for the amount of $4,340. And approve request to waive permit fees for minor alterations to the firehouse kitchen. Do I have a second for the second?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. Any other comments? Word, Jaren. Thank you.